You're watching BCTV. We're all about Branford. You're watching BCTV, Branford Government Television, our service of Branford Community Television. This program is brought to you in part through the support of the Town of Branford.
Okay, welcome. We'll call the Board of Selectmen's meeting for August 7th, 2024 to order. Item one, to consider and if appropriate approve the Board of Selectmen's minutes of June 5th, 2024, June 26th, 2024, which is a special meeting, July 24th, 2024, which is also a special meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, then move seconds. Any corrections at its hearing on all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item passes. Item two, to consider and if appropriate approve a request from Brian Devlin, Superintendent, Ways Water Pollution Control Facility, to waive the bid for the pump station services and award the work for the upgrading pump station control panels and alarm dialers to Control Systems of Connecticut, Inc. for fiscal year 2024, 2025.
Yeah, good evening. Connecticut Control Systems, I've been using them for last 10 years. They do all our control work, wet well repairs, and for what he does, his prices have been staying the same for the last five years, and he does really good work, and he's on call if I need him. Actually, he's out right now working on a problem we have right now, so I would like to use him again. He does very good work, very fair his prices are, too.
Okay. And you just, he's holding his prices, did you correct it?
Yeah, yes, the prices are still the same, yeah.
And this isn't really something we can keep bringing different people in. We need to have some stability as far as who's working on it because they know it.
Yeah, he does the control systems, the alarms, and also the, he does the wet well repairs, and the control systems that we use, he's one of the guys that has all the parts and everything. He's always has them, and we'd have no trouble. He'd be there in a half hour, an hour to repair stuff with the 51 stations we have.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, move second. A further discussion hearing on all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those extensions, thank you very much.
Thanks, Brian.
Item three, to consider and if appropriate approve a five-year shellfish lease agreement between the Town of Branford and Jack Kramer for a bed 546 consisting of 21.3 acres. The lease is in our packet. This was approved by the Shellfish Commission. It goes to us for final approval before we could sign the lease. Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, so move second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, item carries, thanks. Item four, to consider and if appropriate approve a request from Willoughby Wallace Memorial Library for the exemption as permitted by Section 115-4 of the Code, Town of Branford regarding the consumption of alcoholic beverages in a public area and allow wine to be served at the Willoughby Writers Group openings meeting on September 11th, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, move second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item carries. Item five, green use, to consider and if appropriate approve a request from the Branford High School Choir for the use of the town green on September 8th, 2024, from noon to 5:00 p.m. to hold a tag sale fundraiser.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Move second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item carries. Item six, correspondence. We have received a letter from Patricia Dugan. Talking to Patricia, she would like to address the board as well, so we'll combine six. Well, here are the correspondence, and then we'll just go right into seven other business for discussion.
Dear Board of Selectmen, I need your help. Our neighborhood needs your help. More than 19 months ago, a large group of neighbors from Indian Neck went to the Board of Selectmen meeting to tell them firsthand the negative impact the Stony Creek Brewery was having on our neighborhood, specifically the noise coming from concerts, Tuesday night trivia, and other weekly forms of entertainment. I remembered leaving the meeting with little hope, especially when Selectman Angie Higgins said, "Work it out amongst yourselves." But we took her advice and tried on numerous occasions to work it out with our neighbor, the Stony Creek Brewery. We met with Mr. Crowley, we met with the police chief, we attended a police commissioners' meeting, we met with Jamie Cosgrove on more than one occasion. With no help from any of the officials who were hired or elected by Branford to serve the people, we were forced to hire legal counsel at an expense shared by several neighbors. On May 1, 2024, the Neighbors, also known as Turn It Down, reached a legal agreement with the Stony Creek Brewery. I have a copy of that right here, and I'm sure you also have it. So, on August 1, 2024, our neighborhood was once again subjected to a noise that far exceeded the town noise ordinance. By now, many of the Neighbors had purchased decibel readers as per the suggestion of the police chief. When I could feel the inside of my home start vibrating from the concert at the brewery, I took my meter outside. I recorded dBs in the upper 60s to mid 70s for at least 45 seconds when my hand could no longer hold the recording device. When a neighbor and I drove to the police station that evening with our concerns, a female officer, possibly dispatcher, took down my name and number and said the sergeant on duty was not in the building. We could wait, or we could leave. Officer Abley was standing nearby, and when I asked for his help, he said he was a nobody, and that maybe we should contact Town Hall. When I presented to him the legal agreement we had with the brewery, he said, "Maybe we should contact our lawyer." After getting no help from our police department, we went looking to speak to the sound engineer who was supposed to be set up at Burberry Marine per the legal agreement. We found no sound engineer there. When we asked a police officer at the brewery parking lot entrance where the sound engineer was, he said he had no idea. When we went to the area near the concert stage, the police officer there found someone in a green shirt who approached our car. He asked us what dBs we were getting. When I responded, he said I had to speak up. He couldn't hear me. Mr. Crowley then approached our car, told the man in the green shirt that, "We're all set here," and dismissed the man who was trying to address our concerns. Mr. Crowley then told me, "Pat, you'll have your report in two weeks." We were then dismissed and left. A young couple just moved into a house two doors up from me on Wednesday. On Thursday morning, I saw them walking arm in arm, pushing their baby in a stroller past my house, smiling and enjoying the neighborhood. I so hoped that the concert that they would hear that evening would meet the criteria in the legal agreement signed by Ed Crowley. Unfortunately, the Stony Creek Brewery disregarded the legal agreement at the concert that evening. The young couple and their baby's second night in the neighborhood had to be both difficult and upsetting, to say the least. The morning after the concert, I went to G Cafe, purchased pastries, and left them on the new neighbor's doorstep. I didn't want them to think they had made a mistake moving to Harding Avenue. Besides, that's what neighbors do. Jamie, Ray, Angie, please don't dismiss our concerns and put one individual over the needs of an established neighborhood of many. We have not forgotten your responsibilities to the Town of Branford and its people, especially people who have been trying for almost two years to restore peace and quality of life to our Indian Neck neighborhood. Please don't let us down again. Sincerely, Pat Dugan. I think the letter speaks for itself. I also, but I will not read them, have three other letters from neighbors. One is actually a woman in Short Beach that drove by the concert and was appalled at what she saw. I can't keep coming here and asking and getting nothing. Our neighborhood needs your help. We need somebody to respond, somebody who will enforce the town noise ordinance. Tell, we've only wanted one thing from day one, and it's to turn it down, and even a legal agreement that costs thousands of dollars means nothing to our neighbor, the Stony Creek Brewery. Thank you for your time.
Okay. I just think it's important just to clarify that the legal agreement that was stated in the letter, the Town of Branford is not party to that legal agreement. It's just important, I think, to note, this was, that was a private matter between the two parties mentioned, not the town was not involved in that. You know, in terms of the concern of the board just dismissing your concerns, I don't think, I can speak for myself, and I feel confident speaking for the board, I don't think we are disregarding, you know, your concerns. As you had stated, don't take one individual over, you know, prioritize over another, or take. We don't do that as a board, and we, you know, should never do that as a board. But we also have, we have to act within our legal authority. And where this situation that you spoke of, you know, yes, I did participate in meetings to try to hopefully facilitate some resolution between the, within the neighborhood at the request of the petitioners at the time and the business owner. I believe there were some things that were agreed upon in terms of just some of the operational, I think you mentioned trivia, some other issues that were going on at the time were addressed. But again, we have to stay within our, what is under our legal purview. You know, this is not just something, I think, related solely to one, one business or even one location in town. You know, we have zoning regulations. Zoning regulations allow use of property. They allow use of property. So as much as people want to, you know, question, why isn't Town Hall, why aren't the officials stopping certain businesses from happening or taking place a certain activity, it operates within the regulations that were approved by the town that are legally binding. So, once again, we have to operate within our legal authority. So in terms of stopping something that was an allowable use on a property, I don't see where this board or the office of the First Selectmen has a legal authority to stop an activity from occurring. No, thanks. Yeah, if you want to come up under other business, you have to state your name and speak into the microphone, please. Thank you. You're more than welcome.
Thank you. My name is Stephen Carlson. I live at 29 Cory Dock Road here in Branford. We've lived here for over 11 years, my wife and I. We very much like Branford. One of the things that appeals to us is the general quiet in the area. I can second what Pat has said. My wife and I were in our home that evening on August 1, and between the, when the second band started playing between 8:20 and 10 o'clock, by the way, we'd understood the concert was supposed to end at 9:00. That's what it said on the advertisement, and we heard from some policeman, that someone, I heard secondhand, that in fact, that was what the rule was supposed to be, that on a weeknight, that band was going to end at 9:00, and of course, no one enforced that. Let me speak to two things only. First, with all due respect, Mr. Cosgrove, the position that you've taken with respect to the zoning and the brewery, the zoning board doesn't share your view. When we asked them that, they did not say that they had approved concerts at that brewery. And anyone that ever would, it never would have been approved had it been proposed at the time because people know that it's a large residential area. There have been at least 100 homes that have been adversely affected by this on multiple occasions. And in just seeing what that concert looks like, the stage, the crowds, the noise, they don't need a big concert stage to produce music that's going to extend about 75 yards to deal with those folks. The only reason, and what you're relying on, I gather, is an opinion of Town Council that said it's an ancillary activity. We would sue you for that, frankly, but it's very expensive, and it would be very difficult. We think that neither the zoning commission nor Court of Law would agree that it's an ancillary activity to have concerts. However, we were willing to go along with the notion of concerts, and we went there with the brewery on the understanding and per the agreement that they would abide by the noise ordinance. So where does that leave us? It leaves us with the town in enforcing its own noise ordinance. The town's noise ordinance says 61 decibels from that location. We think it actually should be 55, but working with the idea that it's 61. We have measured that with a professional measuring company that we had to hire on our own to evaluate one of these concerts. We've done it with our own decibel devices. The brewery's people have done the same, and the police have all done the same on multiple occasions. They've exceeded 61 by a large margin, 70, 80. Those aren't small numbers because it's not a straight line evaluation on decibels. 80 is much more than six, than just a third more than 61. It's a lot higher than that. And if you would come over to our homes and sit there with one of these concerts, you would find that you can't talk to anybody. So you've lost the use of your home when these concerts are on. In addition, there are children that are adversely affected, there are seniors that are affected, there are people that live, who go to work early, and they have to get up, which I've heard from some of my neighbors. So here we are, and what we were told by the police chief and by the police commission is they're too busy, and they're not going to enforce the noise ordinance, and it's our problem. How in the world can Branford have a noise ordinance, which it used to enforce, by the way, and now it's simply decided that it's not going to do it anymore? All that we can understand as citizens is that the board has told the police that they don't have to enforce the noise ordinance. That's the only answer that it comes to because they respond to you, not, and they're clearly not responding to us. So with all due respect, we do think that this is on you, and we would appreciate it. We're okay with concerts within the limits of the noise ordinance. That seems fair.
I just want to, I think, clarify, I believe you made a statement that the directive came from the board not to enforce. Is that what I heard?
I said, I can only assume that that must be what happened.
Okay, but just for the public's, the board never took a position on that. That's it.
So the police chief acts on his own?
No.
Go ahead.
I worked there long enough to say this one. First of all, I wanted also to make it clear, this board never told someone not to do their job because that's not what we do. There were a few points made earlier, you know, there's ordinances, you know, there's, you got your zoning and so forth. I look at them all as the same. They should all be enforced equally. If they're not being enforced, it's not by this board. It's, the only direction that goes to the police chief is from the police commissioners. So you should go there and ask them if they asked him not to do it. I don't think that happened, but that's where your answer for that would come from.
We met with the police commission months ago. We asked them to direct him, and they said they had no power to tell him what to do on this.
That was on 9/11?
9/11?
That was 9/11 in the meeting, which I attended. There were about 20 of us there in attendance at that meeting, and he said, they said, "We don't have the power to tell him." I said, I looked at the statute. It's clear to me that you have the power to direct the police chief, and they said, "We don't have the power," and he said, "We're not doing it." So we're in a, what, where are we, what are we supposed to do? There's a law, it's not being enforced, it's not happening through the board. What, what would you like, what can we do?
That's a legitimate question. I think you should go back to the police commission. I'd be happy to sit in that meeting to see what they said. The board picks police commissioners. We do that. We appoint. After that, their job, just like fire commissioners, is their job. Police commissioners act under a state statute. They hire, they fire. They do discipline. If someone's not doing their job, they're the only ones that can tell them to do their job if you feel someone's not. Now, there may be a lot of other aspects that are in there that I'm unaware of. I haven't been there in five years. I do know that we used to enforce the noise ordinance. I've told the town attorney that. We've had issues in the past. However, you know, maybe they don't have the people trained right now. I don't know. Again, I haven't been there. But the ordinances are in place. They have been enforced in the past. You have a legal agreement. That unfortunately has to go through the civil part because that's separate from the criminal part. I've gotten another email that, I'm not going to read tonight because it just was sent in emails and not this, but I had some concern as to legitimacy of what was in it based on some of the commentary that came back from that night from people. I hope that they're not confusing, you know, a criminal statute or an ordinance with, you know, a civil agreement, and there may be some confusion on that, too. Again, I only got it this afternoon, so I have no way of looking into it, and it's not my purview to do it. I would hope that that would be something that the police commission would look at to make sure there is no confusion on that. But I sympathize what you're saying. I do. Because there was more going on that night than what you're just saying because the police department, fire department, had to spend a large amount of time there for medicals or whatever they were. So there were other things that were also going on. That would be my suggestion. Go back to the police commission. They govern the police department. Right, wrong, or indifferent, they do. And then you have to go from there. But you should know that I don't think anyone's ignoring you, and even on this board. But once it gets passed here and we, you know, we appoint commissioners and so forth, it's really out of our hands, and you have to hope that the rest of the, you know, boards, commissions, and employees are doing what they need to do. You're saying they're not. They may have something else to say. To argue it out here at this meeting is a little unfair because you don't have their input, I don't have their input, and I couldn't do anything with it if I did.
Well, we had their input at the commissioners' meeting, and the police chief was quite clear that, he said, "We don't have time to do this. We're not going to do it. Period." To which I'm like, "Well, if that's the case, then if he needs more staff in order to be able to enforce the ordinance, that's on you," it seems to me. In any case, I want to be clear about this agreement. Just because we made a separate agreement with the brewery, that can't mean that the town's responsibilities with respect to the ordinance are, have gone away. The town still has responsibility to enforce its own ordinance.
I think that's what I just said.
Good, good. I just wanted to clarify that, and I appreciate that point. All right, we heard what you said. I guess, the only other thing I would say, just as a person, is, is there some reason why you can't say you're sorry that people in the neighborhood are suffering from this, and you're sorry that this situation exists, and you have some concern about it? I mean, we're taxpayers, too. We pay more taxes than he does. I mean, there are over 100 houses, and it makes a difference to all of us, and it comes up now.
I think I started my comments, and I believe Selectman Dunbar stated the same. We're not disregarding your, your comments or the feelings or what you're going through. We're dismissing, we have to act within our purview. So in terms of, there's, we're not dismissing it, and I think I did state that I did attend or participated with Ms. Dugan, Mr. Hartwell, met with them a few times, met with the, with the joint meeting with the property owner regarding this matter. So I think I not only, maybe not here in a public meeting, but also with them, demonstrated my concern, but also staying within what my legal authority is. Lastly, I just wanted to say, as far as your last statement regarding you pay more taxes than this property, I can assure you, I don't base any of my decisions that I make or the attention to issues affecting individuals or the town as a whole based on what an individual pays in taxes. I treat, everybody is a, a resident of Branford gets my equal attention and consideration to matters. It's not based on what one individual pays in taxes.
Okay.
Mr. Hartwell?
Thank you, Jeremy. I hadn't planned to speak this evening, but I did want to address, I'm sorry, John Hartwell, 42 Cory Dock Road, also representative from the 5th District on the RTM. And these, I am one of the people affected by this, but all of these people basically are my constituents, and so I come to you both as a private citizen who's been affected in the past, as you know, but also as a representative, elected representative of this neighborhood. In terms of your legal authority, I'm looking here at the ordinance. It says inspections for the purpose of determining compliance with the provisions of this ordinance. The Board of Selectmen or the designated representatives are hereby authorized to make inspections of all noise ordinances and to take measurements and make tests whenever necessary to determine the quality and quantity, I'm sorry, the quantity and character of noise. So in fact, you do have legal authority in some regard over this situation. It is a town ordinance, and there are other places in the ordinance, I haven't found them because I know it's there, but you can actually give permission with a 21-day notice for people to make more noise than is allowed in the ordinance. I pointed this out to you two years ago when we came here the first time to talk to the Board of Selectmen. So there is authority, and, but there's more than that. There's moral authority. You're the leader of the town. It is clearly a function of the town to enforce the laws, not just of the town, but as well as of the state, and there are other laws that are equally applicable here. And they, by the way, are referenced in the, in the agreement that we worked out with the brewery. So from your position as the leader of the town, we would like you to be more involved and help us get this fixed. All we want is for them to turn it down. That's all we asked from the very beginning. That's what we need now. We have no animus toward the business as a business. We simply want to be able to enjoy our properties the way they were before this all began. So I hope that's clear. And by the way, in terms of that agreement and the fact that the police officer that night was aware of the agreement, that's in the letter, the email that I think you're referring to, there's no question here as to who's supposed to be enforcing the agreement. The agreement was a bilateral agreement between two parties. We understand that. But there is a state statute, and there is a noise ordinance in the town, and they're very clear. And they could be enforced, and they haven't been, and that's the problem.
The only enforcement that can be legally taken, however, for the record, has been designated to the police department because they're the only ones that can give anything punitive out. The board cannot.
We understand that, of course, of course.
So that's why it goes to them, and that's why it's been there.
Understood. And as, as Mr. Carlson pointed out, we've been to the police commission to ask them to work with the police chief. with the police chief to do this, and we've gotten nowhere. And in terms of measurement, the police department owns two professional, previously authenticated noise meters. They were in service last summer for several concerts in the hands of Lieutenant Roach, and so there has been an effort to measure. There's just been no effort to enforce. And we have plenty of evidence that these concerts exceed the levels that they're supposed to be limited to, and we cannot find anyone who will make that happen. So that's why we're here. Any other sort of response?
No, I think your position's clear.
It is. It certainly is. And so far, so is yours because nothing has happened.
Yep. Thank you. All right, any other? Any other? I did receive -- did you want me to read this?
Yeah, I can come up here, too.
I just, as we're -- at the beginning of the meeting, we received, we'll call this under other business, seven, all right? Board of Selectmen, "Dear Board of Selectmen, to consider and, if appropriate, approve a request from J.C. Wyatt for the Branford Village Foundation for the use of the former Canoe Brook Center on Cherry Street to hold a holiday vendor fair, Christmas in the Village, from 10 to 6 p.m. on February, November 24, 2024, to Sunday, December 8, 2024, to hold an organization fundraiser. Look forward to your input, support, and create one-of-a-kind new holiday event for the people of the town of Branford to be involved in, and part of to shop and enjoy the upcoming holiday season." J.C., you're here if you want to speak a little bit more about it. This is a special meeting. We just received this as we came in. We wouldn't take any action. I will just state before you even -- well, why don't you explain a little bit more, I guess, and then I'll...
Okay, sure. I have two points. So J.C. Wyatt for the Branford Village Foundation here in Branford. I did bring this up to you, Jamie and Angie, about a year ago, and it's interesting that we can't make decisions in this town quick enough than a year, and also want to go back to the equality of people and business in this town. I asked to do this holiday event, and I wanted to do it in that building, and I know I haven't got a yes yet, so I'm at that point that I'm coming to the board to say, "What's holding it up? I want to do an event in this town. If you don't want me to do it at that building, I would like to know why." We did have the Backo Association do the holiday event in the old post office at the same time when I was trying to do the event. So the equality, I think, is it a personal or business? I hope not, but I'm here again to say, "I would love to do an event in our town. I want to get the town involved. I think the building is so vacant that we can do something positive for it, and I'm looking for like a two-week event." I mean, I understand they might be pushing it, but people can't shop on a weekend usually, and I'm trying to make it so we could set up a beautiful building, put the right vendors, do it correctly, and utilize something in our town. And we hear from a lot of people, I do, that people want something in town to be positive and great, and I'm hoping to bring that to the town. So if it can't be this meeting, I'm just finally saying, "I want an answer. Can we do -- can I hold a holiday event in this town or another building if you don't want me in that one, which I don't know why?" And that's sort of where I'm here tonight.
Okay, just to be clear, you know, we received this correspondence tonight. I know you have mentioned that you wanted to utilize the building, and I think in over the year, a couple of years, I think you floated a couple of different ideas by, but there was never any formal proposal or request for consideration. So that's why nothing came before this board or even for myself to -- there was nothing presented to me to consider in terms of granting approval. As far as -- so my first recommendation was, you actually should put together a --
An RFP.
Not just a proposal.
Okay.
I mean, a written proposal, what it is in terms of the organization before, you know, and what you intend to do. As far as that building, what I was going to say before you even spoke, I do want to have, before we take any action or consideration for this board, for the use of an outside organization utilizing that building, I would want to just talk to our facilities and...
Sure, I mean, we'll get the insurance.
And certainly, there's a host of things that we would want to look at.
Sure. We can do a map, get the drawings, see how many vendors, what we can hold inside the building, renting the tables. I could -- that's not -- that's the easy part. As I said, I remember last time we talked, you and I were going to RFP together for the proposal of the building of even just putting my organization in the building, and you said, "When is the time? It'll come up." Well, it's a year, and I'm trying to lower what I can possibly do to do something for here in our town. So that's where I come from, and I'm looking for you guys to finally try to support me on it.
Okay.
And if it has to be another meeting, another discussion, you got my email, my phone number, I'm looking for an answer.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other business here in our motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Oh, fair enough. Hi. Thank you, thank you.
This program was brought to you in part through the support of the town of Branford. Watch town meetings and other videos on demand at branfordtv.org.